Last winter, we went down to.
Grasp or water pool.
Destor.
There would not be grass there. It's really nice lawn. It probably goes away like.
What do you make?
Matter of few hours or whatever, but I did look.
Yeah, I don't know.
I can see.
You weren't gonna remember it, but anyway.
Right. There probably was a culvert.
Yeah, we actually we looked at that. You can tell there's a culvert.
Yeah.
That's buried under this everything sedimented in there.
Yeah, so but as far as that.
The whole town was shut.
Wow, yeah, it should be cut out maybe, but but even that.
We had an Airbnb in that in town and.
When you go by, you're looking at. Because the yard goes downhill.
A good meal.
At least you found something.
Yeah.
That's interesting when you think of. Get to a certain level and all of a sudden.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to bring these up later on. I was gonna bring them up, but if you want to bring that up. A couple of good things happened at high school. Um. Bring these around. Just so.
Didn't get anything done, so.
Okay, because I only have coverage at work till eight thirty.
All right.
I can.
Talk to. You worked with last week.
Um.
He's always yours.
They're.
They're massive.
Yeah.
It's three hundred sixty million.
Yeah. Right now, it's like eighty six days.
Yeah.
Part of that obviously is a cold box. We have to open up. We don't know what we're gonna get when we open it up.
Yeah.
But the other thing is the.
Reason of the vaccination.
Yeah, but they they lowered the threshold for needing a respirator for benzene again. So thirteen turnaround it was point five.
Mm hmm.
Nineteen turn it was point two five, and now it's point one. I'm like. So they have to. They're adding another. They're adding four days to help with decon. Uh, on the on the front end to see if we can clean it up. What does all the other sites do that do it? Because they seem to knock us out.
There's a.
Yeah.
The cameras.
I guess when I had. It was a hundred and twenty, but the reason it was a hundred and twenty is because somebody. And it came over that, so they had to build a whole new tower. Design and have it ready to go. And. I think that it well, the turnout might have been a hundred and twenty, but I think that might have been down like almost two hundred days or something with that program. Or that that unit.
You're for the community, though.
Oh, my God. Yeah, it's. I didn't realize how much was, but they were saying last year. Ten million dollars. Into the community as far as hotels and food and.
Oh, right.
Tax and. A lot of money.
I was like six out of nine.
I think last year. I don't make sure she's having a meal.
Um, the nineteen ended up being was one twenty.
Oh, okay.
Uh, because we were like, we were like a hundred thousand dollars over budget. But finished on time. Which was the time was kind of. And without injury. So this one's like three times as much. They have to build a crane down at the ADM's hardware down here in commands.
Because they've already got.
The tower's gonna be brought in by barge. They went to Spain. They're gonna build a crane, real offload it onto some. A truck. And you'll ship it up to the plant from there.
Yeah.
Really, yeah.
No worries. No, don't move.
Daniel, I'm sure.
Six o'clock, shit. I realize that. Holy cow, I almost missed beginning the meeting. That would be embarrassing. I don't know why, Daniel, yes. Is there a reason this tier is not on the. I don't know.
But.
Andrew.
Is there a reason this is off?
Seventy. I don't think so.
Nobody pushed the button or?
Oh. Thirtyish off of, uh.
Yeah.
Cold.
Need input.
Thank you.
All right, it is six o'clock. We'll go ahead and get this meeting underway. I please ask that everybody put your cellphone on silent. Roll call, please.
Councilman Bowman.
Here.
Councilman Edens.
Here.
Councilman Farrell.
Here.
Councilman Klon.
Here.
Councilman Weller.
Next up, we will have a moment of silent prayer. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Klon.
Yes.
Councilman Edens.
Yes.
Councilman Farrell.
Yes.
Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Next up, we have a public hearing. Well, number eight test well bids, and that will open at six oh two.
Starts at page seventy four, I think. Yeesh.
We're catching up.
There it is, wait. We had two bids on this project, Your Honor. And the low bid came in from Gingrich. Who did. Do this, who did the work on well seven for us. So we're very confident that. They're able to do the work for us. We received no communications at City Hall concerning this public hearing.
All right. And that will close at six oh three. Next up, public hearing continuation from previous meeting zoning amendment eighteen point two four point zero two zero permitted uses AG one agricultural rural district.
Yes, Your Honor, this goes back to the request for the ability to. Place a commercial water tower along Highway thirty, which is technically Comanche, to service the rail park and to. Service the Iowa American Water over to Littlemore as well.
Have we received anything at City Hall since then?
No input from at City Hall.
Is there anybody online that would like to speak on this? If so, please raise your hand. All right.
Can I ask a question here? Andrew Warbuck says that.
Um.
State of Highway thirty is a big area.
There's, you know, if you go north of Twenty Nine Oaks, there's a wooded section that was on the market for a little bit, and it's just west of that. There's some land where it starts to go downhill a little bit. For the. It no, it's further, further west, further west of the bus park. Bus park is on the east side of that strip of wood.
Okay.
Lind area. It's on the west side of that woodland area.
All right, thank you.
Well, is it Fortieth Street or Fortieth Avenue from the city of Clinton that is directly across from basically? There's a a street that comes off of Duner of, uh. The street that goes past Valley Oaks.
The gravel one.
Yeah.
And then there's another street between there and Highway thirty, and it 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 ties right across the street from that.
Okay.
Highway thirty from that street. Thank you.
All right, and we will close that at six oh four. All right, we have a guest Kimberly Dickey, Rock Creek Solar Project Updates.
Thank you and good evening. Um, my name's Kimberly Dickey. I'm the project director for Rock Creek Solar, and I live in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. This evening, I just wanted to bring some updates as it relates to our development agreement with the city of Comanche. Specifically, we have, as of last month. Provided to the city, and the city has stamped and received the performance bond as it relates to the road use agreement in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, which protects your roads in the event of any disagreement that would occur as a result of post-construction. During construction, our road use agreement has established the state of our negotiations between the city Public Works Director and our site execution team, as well as our EPC, and we agree to work together to resolve any issues during construction and resolve. Any issues towards the end of construction such that your roads are in as good, if not better, condition at the end of construction. But that performance bond protects the city so that in the event there's a dispute, we can work together in good faith to make sure the roads are repaired to your. Approval until the point at which we're released from the work. Also, up until this point, as of last month, the city has also stamped received the decommissioning bond in the amount of five million, three hundred and seventy two thousand and eighty eight dollars. That pertains to the portion of the project that is within your jurisdiction. So similarly, the city of Clinton and Clinton County have also received their road use agreement performance bonds and their decommissioning bonds that are proportionate to the value of the cost of decommissioning of their proportionate facilities in their jurisdiction. And then also, we have issued to the city of Comanche the certificate of insurance that's required under the road use agreement that specifically. States the coverages throughout construction and also protects the city as indicated in the road use agreement and any agents, employees, staff, or workers on behalf of the city to maintain maintain and manage any compliance with permits and inspections. So I feel that at this point up until working with the city has been a wonderful experience. The development agreement has been a very excellent guiding document. Our EPC director, as well as his staff, have been, I believe, many times over here to work with your permitting staff to work through issues with regard to driveway permits and submittal of the building permit. That is, I think, under third-party review by the city's engineer. And we will not commence construction until we have that permit as well as. Although there are necessary permits through state and federal permitting, and overall, everything's trending in the right direction. But we still have a few more permits to get, including the final permits from the city. So pending any questions, that's the update that I wanted to bring today in advance of a wonderful holiday memorial weekend.
I don't have any.
Okay, well, don't hesitate to reach out if you do have questions or if you have constituents that bring questions your way. I'm very happy and need any time to come at any cadence and bring and bring updates. Once we do commence construction, I will be sure to bring a member of our site execution team with me and or a member of our EPC so that you guys are getting updates. But otherwise, we do plan to keep your public works director on what we call our plan of the day. So it's a steady daily drumbeat. He will receive that. Pete, we call it the daily pod. He will receive the daily pod, and then if there are any questions that arise out of that, he is welcome to come to the site trailer for those meetings or request further information if there's something that he wants to be addressed. But we'll keep you apprised of the exact date of our mobilization. But all of these activities up into this this point, we call soft mobilization, really just staging in preparation and ready for a full mobilization. They're all construction-related activities, but not full-on construction at this point. So I want to make sure we're ready to go and that the cities are ready for us to to move forward as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's here for a reason.
All right, our next guests are Caden Rodriguez and Starlight Starbuck Eagle Project Bike Racks and Comanche Parks.
There has been a slight change to the project. It's no longer just Caden Rodriguez doing it as an Eagle project. He has decided to no longer continue, unfortunately. But the troop, um, troop ten twenty-two and zero zero two two. Technically based out of Clinton, but it is a co-op with Comanche residents as well. They would like to actually take on the project as a service project for the troops instead, since it was something that the troop had been behind Caden to begin with. So it's just kind of a switch in leadership on who's running the project now. I can remain as the point of contact for anything going forward. And we have finalized some figures for what we're expecting. I do have a packet here. I don't think I brought enough copies for everybody, but I do have a packet here that would be available to go through. Basically, what we're wanting to do is add bike racks to each one of the pocket parks as it was presented before. We were looking at possibly prefab or buying prefab versus fabricating our own cost effectiveness. And just ability is gonna be much easier if we just get the prefab ones. There is bulk pricing available, but until we have an overall idea if we're going to be able to budget for all the parks at one time. We couldn't get an exact quote, but there is bulk pricing available from the company that we're working with. We have been looking into possibly having a local concrete company. Assist with concrete pour, but we're completely prepared to. Pour the concrete ourselves by bags, and when we total up how many bags, that's quite the project. But we have a true, between the two troops, we have. Almost thirty kids, and we have full family support. There's one who do all the labor. And all of that, what we're looking at doing is for the pocket parks, which would be Main Street Park, Buffalo Street Park. Max or Maxon Street Park, Chicago Street Park, those four parks. We're looking to do a, they're called the wave bike rack. It's the most cost effective. It allows for the most bike parking while taking up the smallest amount of space. We're looking for, um, to be able to do the one that is would allow parking for up to five bikes. That would require a cement pad that is ten foot by six foot and six inches in depth. Um, the cost per the cement pad would be two hundred and eighty six dollars. Cost per bike rack would be three hundred and ninety. So cost per pocket park would be seven, I'm sorry, six seventy-six. For a total of two thousand seven hundred and four for all four parks. We classified the other parks as medium-sized parks and large parks. So your medium-sized parks would be Anthony Street Park and Pack Park. Those would require a cement pad for in-ground mounting. For up, that would be twenty-two foot by six foot. And that would accommodate a wave bike rack that allows for safe parking for up to nine bikes. And the cost per pad there would be six hundred and thirty. Cost per rack would be six hundred and seventy-three. So with a total of one thousand three hundred and two per park. And if you did both parks, two thousand six hundred and five. And then the larger parks would be City Park and Flat Park. We had discussed a couple of different options of possibly breaking it into two separate smaller parking areas for bikes, especially for City Park, since you have two separate parking pads. But just due to parking or cost effectiveness. And labor intensiveness, we had decided to go with a larger. The larger size, which would be accommodating for up to fifteen bikes. And that would require a cement pad for in-ground mounting measuring thirty-seven point five feet by six foot. And the cost per cement pad there would be one thousand and ninety-six dollars. Cost per bike rack would be one thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Making that two thousand two hundred and ninety-three per park and four thousand five hundred and eighty-five for both parks. So if we were able to do all of the parks with that were listed on this, the project in its entirety would be nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars as a projected cost. We are willing to do fundraising to help offset costs within the community. We're also willing to advertise to the community to see if they wanted to assist with any of the labor, just to make it more of a community-feel event. It's something that. We're working hard now that our troop is established in number and size. We're working hard to get more out in the community more and actually be able to contribute to the local community, especially Comanche. Comanche kind of gets neglected. We have a lot of members from Comanche. But we tend to go like Eagle Point and City of Clinton. So Comanche kind of just gets neglected and put on the wayside. So we're really looking to get more involvement with the troop within doing work, working directly with. Parks and Recs for any future service projects they have going on. We have talked to Parks and Rec. They were willing to allocate some of their funds that they already have in their budget toward us. We didn't talk exact numbers at that time. But they did say that council would have to have approval of whether or not they could assist with us, so we're requesting that we just be considered for approval for any funds that would be available to assist with that. That's pretty much.
I'm just writing down, writing down notes.
That's okay.
No. And I know how much money Parks and Rec has in their coffers. I don't see why we wouldn't. Send some money to, you know, authorize Parks and Rec to support this project. Benefit in the park.
The next meeting, I'll ask. I'll find out.
Well, and when one option is, um. I mean, if it needs to be split into, you know, we only do a couple of parks this year and possibly a couple of parks next year, or if we need to scale back. If we can't, like if they don't have them funds or we can't fundraise enough to get the get it going, it could turn into a multi-year project. We would like to see it up and running. I know that, you know, having the bike path go through town, I see that used quite frequently. I use it with my children quite frequently. And then having the places to sit and rest and the exercise equipment, it's just and the bikes end up getting up on the ground and then kids are tripping over them, especially at parks. So that that was actually the reason we came up with the idea to begin with. Was just because. We've had children that have fallen or children that have damaged bikes because they just lay them on the ground, and if you provide a place to for them to park them, they usually do use them, especially if their parents are with them.
We need a motion to authorize Parks and Rec.
Not an agenda item to make that kind of.
Okay.
Action. My recommendation would be, you know, figure out how much you're actually gonna ask for from Park and Rec, depending on how much you're gonna fundraise.
Okay.
Right? And because you can direct Park and Rec to give whatever they want, and they probably have enough money in their accounts to pay for the whole thing if you wanted to, but. You know, I I get the point. You're trying to to generate some interest in.
Right.
And when I talk about philanthropy in the community, that's one of those things.
Right.
So if they're gonna raise some funds to do that, that's great. And then, you know, the Park and Rec portion maybe is the portion to say, okay, we're gonna do a fifty fifty match or something of that nature. So it gives gives you folks a goal.
Right.
To get towards, and then Parks and Rec puts it the other half in, something like that.
Okay.
That should be something that that. Councilman Farrell could probably take the Park and Rec and see if they're okay with that and then get the direction from council to authorize that into their budget for next year. And we'll just amend their next year's budget to do that. And in the meantime, I I mean, I I think that seems reasonable. And then you folks can go off and start doing whatever fundraising you can to come up with that money. And we may have some resources available, so. Give me a jingle.
I can do that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, do we have any public comments on agenda topics? Is there anybody online that has a public comment on an agenda topic? Okay, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Real quick for the council, if you look at the item number four, our library board meeting minutes were getting taken and then. Didn't get forwarded like they should have been, so. We had to play some, you see, we had to play some catch-up there.
That's how you got to page seventy-five.
Yeah.
Well, now they're officially part of our record.
That's right.
I have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Klon.
Yes.
Councilman Edens.
Yes.
Councilman Farrell.
Yes.
Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
But related to that topic, I want to thank Gail and her staff and Shawna for all their work getting everything organized for that, too.
First up under new business, consideration of the of the award of a contract to Gingrich Well and Pump Service LLC for the construction of well number eight test well in the amount of one point one, one million, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. Andrew and Dan is.
Dan's not here. Jacob's here in his seat. You wanna step up to the mic, young fella? Yeah. We'll probably be seeing you a little bit more.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, Jacob Arble, engineering representative here on behalf of Dan Social Burger tonight.
This is for the well eight.
Yep, yep.
Test well.
Yep, for the well eight test well. I guess, is there anything you want to?
There was, if I recall, there was the one point one eight eight million and the other one was one point six.
One point six, seven.
So a pretty stark difference.
Yeah. And really, three M has asked for a test well to make sure that they get down there and find out that the quality is good.
Yep.
And if not, we'll have to stand back and punt.
Yeah.
And so it's it's at the existing well six location, right off or right in the parcel of the water tower.
Oh, so we're not, we're not drilling at the at the newly acquired property?
No, well, that property's not acquired yet. I had a conversation with our legal team on that.
Okay.
This morning. We will be having another meeting early next week.
Oh, can't wait. Okay. Hey, I'll make a motion to approve this award.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
This is all part of the three M water quality PFAS project, and they're approving this. They'll fund it. So.
Through reimbursement.
Yep. Well, they'll front us the money for this. Have that cash in our drawers.
No.
It's a little bit of money.
As as Andrew had mentioned earlier on, prior that that Gingrich did the well seven. And we were, we were happy with them prior, rightly.
All right, we'll have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Farrell.
Yes.
Councilman Klon.
Yes.
Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Edens.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good.
Number two under new business, first reading of an ordinance amending chapter eighteen point two zero point zero two zero AG one agricultural rural E commercial water tower.
A bit more difficult with the touchscreen because it's touchy. Okay, don't breathe.
An ordinance amending zoning ordinance chapter eighteen point two zero point zero two zero AG one agricultural rural permitted uses of the Comanche Iowa Code of Ordinances. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Comanche, Iowa. Section one, purpose. The purpose of this ordinance is to amend zoning chapter eighteen point two zero point zero two zero of the Comanche Iowa Code of Ordinances for the regulation of the permitted uses in areas zone AG one agricultural rural in the city of Comanche. Section two, facts found. The city council hereby makes the following. The city council hereby makes the following findings a fact. One, the city of Comanche zoning ordinance regulates permitted uses in the zoning ordinance chapter eighteen. Two, the current ordinance does not permit the installation of water towers for commercial use in areas where a water tower may increase regional development. Three, recent advancements in the regional rail park have developed requirements for additional water service. Four, the city of Comanche water system does not have intention to build or planning to install infrastructure in this area. Five, the Comanche Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed and recommended adoption of the amended language to incorporate in the zoning ordinance. Six, the city of Comanche finds it appropriate to amend the zoding ordinance. Section three, amendment. The Comanche Iowa Code of Ordinances for zoning chapter eighteen point two zero point zero two zero is hereby amended by adding the following language. E, commercial water towers are permitted with the approval of a special use permit. Service lines from any commercial water tower or its associated water network may service properties in Comanche city limits with the special use permit. Section four repealer. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with any provision of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section five severability clause. If any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole or any section provision or part thereof not adjudicated invalid or unconstitutional. Section six, one effective. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its final approval, passage and publication as provided by law.
Make a motion to approve the reading.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Klon.
Yes.
Councilman Edens.
Yes.
Councilman Farrell.
Yes.
Number three under new business, discussion on ditches, culverts and drainage. Councilman Bowman.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So this started up with a, we had a complaint from a resident who lives off Dun Road in the corner and Oakwood Trail. And what they have there, Oakwood Trail, as we recall, is a privately owned road which services the people who live in Twenty-Nine Oaks. And that, there was a culvert underneath that at the intersection with Dun Road in the easement. The culvert is clogged and it's clogged because of just natural sedimentation has, has filled that up. And so as a result, because of the way the, when it rains, this individual gets a little lake in his front yard. And so he's looking for some relief. The city's position right now is we're not responsible for that because that culvert is, is essentially a private drive. And we don't own it. So I went and I did some digging. So I had, I had some thoughts. I went and looked into what our ordinance says. Andrew sent some stuff out as well about what our ordinance says and what we in our ordinance is under streets and ditches. No person shall obstruct, deface or injure any public road in any manner, break up by breaking blah, blah, blah without permission. So there's some, says we can intentionally clog up our, our ditches. It's unlawful to obstruct, fill or any manner alter street ditches and so on. All driveways and parking areas shall have a culvert in the ditch the size and kind of specified by the city. So that's all in there. And there's another ordinance which says we're not supposed to obstruct or fill the ditches. But then I looked into it further. Okay, so what's the responsibility of the individual homeowner with these ditches? And we, we in this, in our ordinances, we declare people responsible for things like it's a responsibility of any and all property, which maintain their property in the public right of way free of any and all weed nuisances, for example. If you have a sidewalk in your right of way, you're responsible maintaining it and that's clearly delineated in our ordinances. What we don't specify is in our ordinances is saying the homeowner is responsible for the maintenance of their ditches. They, they have to keep the grass clean, cut and they have to keep the sidewalk in good, in good order. But we don't specify responsibility. And so my concern is this, if we tell local homeowner and individual homeowners, they have to, they're responsible for those to, to maintain that drainage. We're going to have people out renting mini Xs and next thing you know, we've got ditches dug out by someone who's not really trained to do so. And now the water's going the wrong way and someone else has got the water in their yard. And it, my thoughts are for those situations, and there's not very many of them, where we have accumulation of water following a rainstorm because of a clogged culvert or the ditch is just naturally filled in, right? We don't have any ordinance which tells anybody they have to maintain their ditches. If we have a ditch filled in and, and the culvert got clogged, it'd seem to be better for us to have the professionals do the work and go to those individual cases, clear that culvert out, clear the ditch out and then let the, let the drainage go. I understand the concern about setting a precedent where we now have, you know, sixty-eight homeowners calling up saying, hey, I want my culvert cleared out. I want my culvert cleared out. But we don't have, we have, as far as I know, we have maybe two properties that I know of with active complaints about water, standing water following a rain. And this was one of them. And the other, I think, Bobby, you looked at the other one today. And that's not the same thing. They've got a French drain that's doing a lot of good.
I looked at it. I watched it after the inch and a half rain and, and I don't think it is the same thing as you Congressman Bowman and I discussed, you can actually tell by the vegetation in this particular ditch out by Twenty-Nine Oaks that water clearly does stay there for a period of time because it's not, you can see the actual shape of, of where the vegetation has changed because, you know, anything else would have drowned from the amount of water that stays there. So, so it definitely is a different case than the, the one, the other one that we were looking at. So, but I, I think we're also on that border of, if, if, is that culvert, how do we find out exactly if that culvert's in our property or not? I believe it is from what I.
Yeah, I went out measured. And if you look at the, I looked at Beacon and it, you know, defined where the easement is and so on. And I believe that culvert falls into our easement by several feet.
Yeah, I, I believe so as well, but.
But so, and we can, you know, Public Works can establish that as well by, you know, again, we have the experts do that work, but what my, again, my concern is we tell homeowners they're irresponsible to maintain that. We're going to have, we don't know what we're going to get. So I can go down to the rental place, get a mini X and start digging. And next thing you know, we got somebody else.
Not to do that, Councilman. You're required to get an, a permit to excavate in the right of way.
Okay.
We regulate that.
All right.
So any Joe Blow can't go get an excavator and start digging in the right of way. Because there's infrastructure in the right of way.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah.
And that's the other thing, yeah.
I want to dig up a gas line. Right, I get that. But you understand my point, right?
The, the purpose behind what we do when we accept public infrastructure is that the subdivisions when we accept public infrastructure are built to city standards. If they're not built to city standards, the city doesn't accept that infrastructure as city improvement. And our position on that culvert specifically has been if not for that private road, that culvert wouldn't exist. Therefore, it's the city's responsibility to clean it out. Just like it's not the city's responsibility to plow those streets.
Okay. And, and, and again, that's why I have this, this discussion. I just don't.
That's been our position to this point.
Okay. But we don't, we don't set that responsibility, right? We, we've had, we have the, the, our engineers provided us a stormwater improvement plan, which included things like, you know, re-digging out the ditches and whatnot. So if, if there's a problem with the ditch with no culvert, we would, we accept that responsibility. As soon as you put a culvert in, we are not accepting responsibility. Correct?
Say that again, please.
If I have, if I have an easement with a ditch in it and the ditch fills in, but I want that ditch dug out, the city would do that. As soon as you put a culvert in there, you're saying the city doesn't do that. That's the homeowner's responsibility because we put a culvert under a driveway.
I don't know about that because we've got a lot of ditches that are filled in.
I know.
Especially third street over.
Right. Well, we've identified that in that stormwater report.
And that may be part of our stormwater maintenance plan for those streets. And in that case over there, I would think if that was a situation causing damage to the infrastructure of our street, we would do something about it because we're responsible for the ditch. But again, the culvert is only there because of the private road. We wouldn't certainly go to other driveways where there's ditch issues and clear out their culverts on their private driveways. Just because there isn't a problem there now doesn't mean people aren't experiencing those problems and taking care of it themselves. So my concern is once you open that door, everybody else can line up and say, well, what about my culvert? It's in the right of way. It's in the ditch. It's on a private driveway. I want mine cleaned out, too.
Okay. Well, then what we should do is we should put it in our ordinances to make it clear the maintenance of a culvert is a responsibility of the property owner.
On private drives is a responsibility of the property owner.
Right. But
That would, that would be staff's recommendation.
That would, we, we don't, because right now it doesn't, it's not clear. We, we make it clear about sidewalks. We clear about the, the grass and weeds. If we want the culvert to be maintained and make that the responsibility of the homeowner, we should put that in the ordinances so it's clear. Uh, what do you guys?
I agree. I just think this would, if we did it for them, like it's already been said, it was good for one, it's good for all. And I think that would, I mean, any homeowner, why would they pay for it themselves if the city would pay for it? And I think that would just open us up for something I don't think we're prepared for.
Whoever builds the house. The question from the legal team was who pays for the culvert when it goes in? That's the homeowner.
Right.
Whoever built the house.
Cost of maintaining it should go. Unless it are, it's differently. So if you, if the homeowner buys the culvert, has the culvert installed, then it would seem to naturally flow that the homeowner would have the responsibility to maintain the culvert. And, you know, flush it out or, you know, whatever. I mean, if the culvert was collapsing because it had rusted through after forty years, the city would not be considering replacing it. But, I mean, I don't think so.
But I, I think once you step down the path of we're going to start clearing them out when it collapses, then you're going to end up having them. The next time will be, well, you got to replace it now, too.
Okay.
I have that written as a note if that's the direction of council to work on amending that ordinance to make it more clear.
Personally, I think we should, I mean, it should be written, you know, because this gentleman or these people assume that we should take care of it. So we should make it clear whether we feel we should or shouldn't.
Right. Either way, it should be clear.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah. I have the note. We'll start working on an ordinance for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you, Councilman, if you can just zip me a note or come see me and we'll go over and try and, you can give me a hand on where you think you want it to go.
Sounds good.
Because there's like three different places where it could probably go, but we'll try and find the best one for it.
Sounds good. I appreciate that. Well, I'll get with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one donut.
Number four under new business, approve two temporary summer workers for Public Works. Galen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, requesting money again for two temporary summer help workers. I didn't get the, the verbiage in there. Well, part-time temp, or full-time temporarys just for the summer, same rate of pay as last year, forty hours a week, no benefits. Basically during the summer, off school season.
Still, still in your budget?
I believe so. Yeah, I'm going to have to double check my.
We just, we just added whatever percentage to the budget you had from last year, so.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Klon.
Yes.
Councilman Edens.
Yes.
Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Farrell.
Yes.
Number five under new business, approve hiring and replacement for retiring Public Works employee. Galen.
Yes, thank you. Pending retirement of one of the street maintenance workers, we know it's coming, just don't know the exact date yet, but it's probably within the next thirty to sixty days. So I'd like the permission to put out an ad and start interviewing, getting resumes for his replacement.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Oh, I'll ask you a question.
Yes.
This is a hundred percent that he's going to retire?
Yes.
Okay.
He just hasn't given me a date yet because he's waiting on his IFRS and social paperwork to say, here's where it'll work.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further discussion?
I can add, Your Honor, based on the ad we put out for the Sexton position, we received a lot of inquiries. I think we've got nine.
Nine, for sure.
Applications so far.
Nice.
So that's very promising for our operation.
Cool. All right. Roll call, please.
Who was my second on that? Thank you. Councilman Edens.
Yes.
Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Klon.
Yes.
Councilman Farrell.
Yes. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number six, adopt a resolution setting the time and place for a public hearing on a proposal to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. A resolution setting the time and place for a public hearing on a proposal to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Whereas Iowa law required cities to file a budget with the state establishing the amount of money that may be spent within certain program areas. And whereas it may be necessary to amend the filed budget to increase the amount of money authorized to be spent in certain program areas. And whereas to amend the budget, the city must publish notice and hold a public hearing in accordance with the provisions of Iowa law. Whereas the city of Comanche proposes to amend its fiscal year ending twenty twenty-five annual budget. Now therefore be it resolved that a public hearing on the proposal to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget is hereby set for May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five at three P M. At City Hall. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to publish notice of this public hearing as required by Iowa law.
I do have confirmation. We'll be able to have a quorum there. So thank you all.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Farrell.
Yes.
Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Klon.
Yes.
Councilman Edens.
Yes.
Number seven under new business. Resolution calling for a public hearing to enter into a twenty-eight E agreement for the administration of a uni library catalog consortium, consortium for the Clinton County Public Library Association.
Your Honor, Councilman. This is a, an agreement between the Association of Public Libraries of Clinton County. So that's Clinton, Dewitt, Kalma, Sweetland, Comanche and Lost Nation. We work together to provide services to the whole county. So if one of us doesn't have something, another one might and all of that. So together, though, there's money that they gather through the cities that don't have libraries in our county. So as a group, the directors, a year or so ago, I'm told, decided that it might be nice if the citizens of the county were able to go on one website. It's not a website. It's, it's an ILS, which is an integrated library system. It just is the place where we keep all the books and whatever you can check out from the library. It's the electronic catalog. So they thought it might be nice if everyone could go to one catalog rather than, oh, Clinton doesn't have it. Now I have to get off of that website and go to Comanche's website and blah, 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 you know? So that people can access materials easier. So with that in mind, the, they started the process and there's a couple of libraries that have already joined and we're just the next one on the list that would like to join. The Board of Trustees was in favor of it at our last meeting. And it will be at no cost to the Comanche Library or the patrons of the library in any way. Because of that money that comes from the other cities that don't have libraries, that, that will be where the funding comes from. And that is an indefinite ongoing cost and it will be absorbed in that way. So that is, is that what I have to tell you?
You have a public, you know, a twenty-eight E agreement.
Yeah.
A resolution setting the time and place for a public hearing on a proposal to enter into a twenty-eight E agreement with the Clinton County Public Library Association. Whereas Iowa law requires a public hearing when entering into official agreements under Iowa Code twenty-eight E. And whereas the Comanche Public Library Board has voted to approve a twenty-eight E agreement with the Clinton County Public Library Association for a union library catalog consortium. Now therefore be it resolved that a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a twenty-eight E agreement between the Comanche Public Library and Clinton County Public Library Association is set for June third, twenty twenty-five at six P M. At Comanche City Hall. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to publish notice of the public hearing as required by Iowa law. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to publish notice of the public hearing as required by Iowa law.
Make a motion approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Edens.
Yes.
Councilman Farrell.
Yes.
Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Klon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Number eight under new business, resolution for a public hearing for many of the capital improvement plan.
Hey, Your Honor, this is required by code to amend the capital improvement plan. We've done a lot of work on it. Uh, Councilman Bowman is my editor in chief. And he gave me some notes today, so I need to go back and make some corrections. He always finds the little things. He's persnickety that way. I appreciate him very much. Um, so I'll be making those corrections, uh, tomorrow and then getting that plan out to you. And we'll make that plan available to the public on the website. We'll have the public hearing and it will, uh, work on, you know, getting the vote to approve that plan forward. Nothing's changed since we, uh, presented the last time. It's just the, the, what's the word I'm looking for? The summary, the, of what's going on, explaining all the projects. All the, all the data that you've seen in the spreadsheets is the same. It's just, just an explanation of what's been done and what's coming up and why.
A resolution setting the time and place for a public hearing on amending the capital improvement plan. Whereas Iowa law requires a public hearing when adopting or amending a capital improvement plan. Whereas the Comanche City Council has held workshops for recommendations to amend the capital improvement plan. Now therefore be it resolved that a public hearing on a proposal to amend the capital improvement plan is set for June third, twenty twenty-five at six P M. at Comanche City Hall. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to publish notice of a public hearing as required by law.
I'll make a motion approve.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Klon.
Yes.
Councilman Edens.
Yes.
Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Farrell.
Yes.
Number nine under new business, library statistic and report. Gail.
Hi again. Thank you for your time tonight.
Please take a second. Let's see. Stop whispering in my ear. There it is.
Top one.
Oh.
No.
I don't have, I don't have PowerPoint in this computer.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You wanna hold it until next meeting?
I sure can.
Okay.
I might even have more.
We'll table that.
Thanks anyway.
I'll check that next time. Or I'll just put it on a, a PDF. Unless you've got fancy animations. You have fancy animations?
No, not this time.
Okay, we'll just put it in the PDF next time.
Next up is the Comanche Police Department April twenty, twenty twenty-five report. Chief Schmitz.
Just a quick question before I start on, on this. So I always have the monthly report on the last council meeting. It seems a little late to me. Um, the basis for that is because of our staffing information, those hours. Um, sometimes payroll runs into the next month, so I gotta wait till I get my numbers, so. If you guys would rather see it in the first meeting of the month, I can get rid of those numbers and.
I think whatever works best for you is okay with us.
For you.
Wanna see the staffing hours, it'll be the, the second meeting of the month.
Yeah, that, I think that'd be okay. We appreciate it, so.
So the monthly statistics for the, uh, April report, uh, we drove, drove thirty-nine hundred and fifty-two hours. We had seven hundred and thirteen calls for service. Um, annually so far this year, we've had twenty-seven hundred and fifty-six calls. We had thirty-nine new, uh, cases, which is unusually, uh, large for a month. We had forty-two ambulance, uh, fire department assists, eight motor vehicle collisions, ten arrests. We had a hundred and three traffic stops. Of those traffic stops and traffic accidents, we issued thirty-three citations, uh, seventy-four, uh, warnings. Uh, we had thirty-nine mutual aid calls and we logged, uh, four hundred and eighty-seven self-initiated field activity. So the next three pages are a detailed summary of those thirty-nine, uh, new cases. And then the map shows where each of those occurred. It was pretty spread out for the month, so it, it's relatively hard to see.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. There it is.
There we go. So staffing, uh, we had forty-eight, uh, hours of personal time. We had a hundred and, one hundred point five hours of overtime. Two hours of court time at double time, fourteen comp hours used, and eleven point seven five earned. So right now we're sitting eight point five two percent under budget on the year. And on April twentieth fifth, Officer Jack Davidson graduated from the academy and has started field training, uh, with Sergeant Parks. So the social media, uh, Corporal Elliott, that's just a summary of her posts for the month. Next page, our training, we had eleven point seven hours, seven, five hours of training for April. And then our community policing page, uh, Corporal Snodgrass held two different walks for the cops. One for the elementary school and one for the middle school. The kids all met at City Park and walked to their respective schools both of those days, so he always appreciates the photographs that follow on those, so. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. All right, do we have any communication from the city attorneys?
No, that I'm aware of, Your Honor.
Uh, Andrew?
Uh, yeah, Your Honor, I, I sent you all the email about my adventures in cemetery work. I hope you found that interesting. Uh, I really wanna thank, uh, staff here. And, uh, Jeff and Mike at the cemetery, they've been very helpful in making sure things continue to go off without a hitch. And the staff at Snow Zone, they've been, the ones been dealing with, with these burials and, and, uh, McManus Backhoe for, uh, all the great work they do for us. Everybody involved, even Wilburg Vault, they've been very helpful. Understanding our situation and, and helping us continue to move forward. We're very happy with it. And they will be ready for Memorial Day regardless of the rain. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Um, I do not have anything at this time. Councilman Edens?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Councilman Klon?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilman Farrell?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilman Bowman.
I gotta make up for everybody else. Several things. Um, so at the last meeting, a member of the public spoke, uh, and asked about, uh, whether we could have EMS permanently, uh, sitting on the other side of the railroad tracks because of the trains. I, um, at, at, at a future meeting, I'd like to just discuss the viability of that. And whether we, whether we can or can't do that. It's, my understanding, at one time we had somebody who talked about doing that. Having EMS over there, um, but I just wanted, just to maybe get on the record to talk about why we should or shouldn't be able to do that.
So when we first opened the fire station down there at the community center, we had an ambulance down there. The reason we don't have it down there is because it's more of a hindrance. You only have one person on the whole fire department that lives on that side of the tracks. They don't have any fire gear there. Um, and more often than not, because of the majority of the town is on this side of the tracks, we were finding ourselves stuck on this side, not being able to get the ambulance to help people on this side.
And we only have one ambulance, right?
We have two ambulances.
We do, okay.
Yep, but we did try that for several years and, and after working through that, it was just, it's not operationally feasible just because of that.
Okay.
That, and it puts us in it, so then you don't know if the first ambulance is out, do I have to go one, which station I have to go to, and you could not be able to get to there because of a train in the, in the opposite fashion, so, but mostly because there's no staffing over there.
Okay.
So, nobody lives on that side of the tracks other than one person, so.
I get it. All right, thank you.
But we can certainly discuss other options, but that's why both ambulances are housed at the main station, so.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, so I can give you some good news. If you read the paper, I saw where the, uh, uh, Iowa Secretary of State came and recommended, uh, recommended the high school because ninety-eight percent of the seniors registered to vote. So that's amazing, and I, I hope those, uh, every one of the seniors exercises that right to vote come November. Get their voices heard. And the other thing, good news out of this, of the high school, was Comanche's high school graduation rate is, uh, uh, well above the state average, so. Uh, good for them in, uh, uh, almost ten percent higher than a, a local municipality close to us, so. Good job on, for the high school for both of those things. Uh, uh, third thing is, uh, my, my wife observed, uh, uh, coming through, sat down Washington Boulevard, a driver passed right by the flashing lights at the crossings there, right by the, right on Seventh Avenue down the road here, and, um, uh, caught on dash cam, the driver, uh, would have hit the two children who are trying to cross the street, but the children at the last second looked that way and saw the truck coming and they stopped. But otherwise, the driver just continued oblivious, so. I spoke to the chief, he's mentioned Corporal Snodgrass isn't, just yesterday issued a citation to somebody for going through that, so we they need to re-educate our public and what those flashing lights mean to protect our kids. And then lastly, Andrew, if you could please, uh, uh, talk very briefly about what's going on with the, with the mechanic's liens on the homes serviced by Iman and
Sure.
To discuss what that sequence of events.
Over to the legal team.
Oh, that'd be great.
Want to address that?
Yes, I, it would be good to talk about. We've got a lot of concerned citizens and I would like that.
We're concerned too, because we had liens put on us.
Yeah, I, I had.
Illegal reasons?
I had one.
It was brought to the attention of our office by a local banker last week that, um, upon reviewing an abstract, it was a mechanic's lien that had been placed upon basically most ugly property in the City of Comanche, including city properties by a subcontractor we discovered, uh, to the Iman project. The, it's not somebody that Iman had hired. Uh, Iman had hired a company by the name of Verita to install the infrastructure. Verita turned around and hired a subcontractor to do it by the name of Waterman. And apparently there was some sort of a dispute between Verita and Waterman. And Waterman, uh, without any discussion with Iman or directly with the City of Comanche, filed a mechanic's lien. Um, against basically every property again in the City of Comanche. Um, and so once it was brought to our attention, we immediately, one, looked up the lien, two, found out who was involved in the lien, contacted the attorney who was, had filed the lien on behalf of the subcontractor. Uh, explained, uh, or discussed with them the fact that, uh, it's inappropriate uh, to put a mechanic's lien on municipal property. And then we also notified Iman. Iman basically then immediately got involved, and within roughly twenty-four hours, we were advised that the matter was resolved. Uh, as of twelve oh seven, uh, this afternoon, the formal release had been filed, uh, on behalf of Waterman. So, um, the matter is done. It's concluded whether or not it was inappropriate or not. We can spend a lot of time arguing that, or we can just basically say this was not something that the city was involved in. Once it was brought to our attention, we immediately dealt with it. The release was actually signed last Friday, but it just took roughly two days for the release to work its way through the system with the Iowa Secretary of State's office. But I, I was provided a copy of the release this morning by the attorney, uh, for Waterman. And then I, I checked the Secretary of State's website as of this afternoon and verified that as of twelve oh seven, the lien had been released. So I don't know that anybody was denied a loan or a mortgage or anything, but the problem uh, was not of the city's making and has been resolved.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. That's all I had, Your Honor.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Galen? Chief Shutey?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Chief Schmitz? Gail?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Tony?
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right, does, um, is there any public comments? I don't see anybody online besides Clinton Harold. Does Council have anything for future agendas besides what you have already brought, mentioned? All right, we will take a slight recess and go into closed session.